Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, July 15, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Logan is excused.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our commission meetings from 6:12:24 Admin Meeting, 6:17:24 Commission Meeting, and 6:26:24 were received. Are there any corrections, additions? The minutes withstand as submitted. Presentation. Transportation System Capital Traffic Plan. Transportation Director David Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
As we discussed, this capital traffic flow plan at the previous administrative meeting, and in that meeting, we discussed that the capital is going to reach out and they've already scheduled some meetings for some outreach to stakeholders in the chamber and other stakeholders in this. So it's our recommendation tonight to table this item until they've had that outreach and then come back to you with a consensus from all the parties involved.
Thank you. Okay, we have a full house here. I don't know who all these people are here for, but we'll find out just, we'll find out shortly. Proclamation. Flora Wong Day Proclamation. City of Helena Proclamation. Whereas Flora Wong's life journey from her early years in Boston through adversities in World War II China to building a new life in Montana exemplifies remarkable strength, perseverance, and the spirit of continuous self-improvement. And whereas Flora Wong joined her husband Charlie Wong in Helena on a snowy December day in 1948 and became part of Montana's large and significant Chinese-American community, operating the beloved Wing Sheng Grocery on South Main and Lita Chinese Kitchen and Orianta Gift Shop and Charlie's cousin George and Irene Wong, and was an active member of the local American Business Women Association chapter. And whereas her autobiography, Long Way Home, Journeys of a Chinese Montana, is acknowledged by Montana historians to be the most important record ever produced of an immigrant experience in Montana, and her moving narrative is the most valuable personal account ever left behind by a resident of this special place we call Helena. And whereas Flora Wong became a disciplined athlete at age 50 and competed in swimming, running, and race walking, acquiring over 900 medals in national and world senior games, was recognized as Montana Big Sky Athlete of the Year in 1999, and was inducted into the Helena Sports Hall of Fame in 2009 and the Huntsman World Senior Games Hall of Fame in 2023. And whereas Flora Wong serves as an inspiring role model, demonstrating that it is never too late to pursue your new passions and achieve great success even in one's senior years. And whereas, as a wife, as a mother of five, as a community businesswoman, as a senior citizen star athlete, and as an author, she has inspired generations of our city residents to be the best they can be. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Wilma Collins, Mayor of Helena, do hereby proclaim July 15 as Flora Wong Day throughout this city in recognition of her extraordinary life, contribution to our community, and her inspiring legacy of resilience and positivity, and that the City of Helena encourages all citizens to honor Flora Wong by reflecting on her achievements and embodying her spirit perseverance and dedication in their own life. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 15th day of July 2024. Wilma Collins, Mayor, Dana Clayborne, Clerk of the Commission. Ms. Wong, would you come up?
I speak right here?
Yeah.
I talk to the front, right?
Do the commission, right here. Right here.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Okay. Wait. Should I start now? I gotta take my breath. I'm, I want so honored. It's so special honor for Helena, what it did to me. I want to thank you, Emily and Patty, to do the lot of work, and I enjoy it every much. And then I, 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 I came, I came back to the United States in 1948, December 48, and in 1949, my first child was born. And then, and then, and on and on, I had more and more. My husband, Charlie Wong, and we had the business in Helena called Wing Sheng Grocery, and then for a long time until the open renew taking over. But Helena, it always is my special place to stay. And my, and my, I, I miss my husband, you know, he, he left me a long time ago. You know, I came to the United States in 1948, and then, and then I, I stayed in business. I, I did a lot of, met a lot of my friends, and I had a wonderful family, and then I had a great, big, my, my family, and my family keep growing. I can't even count how many I have. They want, it's wonderful. It just is so special. It really is special, and then I, I mean, I'm sorry, I, I can't hold my, anyway, I, I worked really hard when I was, I was, I came back from China. And then I, I work hard, and I, I, I grow my family. I had, I had five children. They, they all here, and then I keep, I keep growing, and then they all graduate from Helena High School. That was it. And then they all, all left town, but I lived in Helena for 70, 73 years. It's always my special place to stay in Helena. And my husband was so, he, he is the greatest, greatest guy. I miss him so much, but it, he, my husband, he taught me everything. He taught me how to speak English. I don't know how to speak English. He taught me how to speak. He, we had a grocery store, and he, he, he teach me everything, everything the canned good, you know, and what, what they call, but, you know, sometimes I can't remember, but I was so, I was so young. But, but it, it was a great time, you know, my husband, you know, though, he, he did, he did, he helped me teach how I speak English, because I, I never know how to speak English. All I do is Chinese, but, but he's, but anyway, but this is the greatest time, I miss him, and I, and then, and Helena, I meet, I meet so many friends, special friend, it's always in my heart, and I always want to come back to Helena. Helena is the greatest place to live.
Amen.
But, but somehow, but somehow, you know, I can't live alone, so I had to go from daughter to daughter, from Tucson, California, San Francisco, and then, and Helena. You know, my sons in Helena, and my, my oldest daughter live in Tucson, my second daughter live in Los Angeles, and my third daughter live in Mel Valley, California, and my Nancy live in Enola, Washington. They all keep me pretty busy, and I still, I still can do anything, but my eyesight is not that good, but, but I can, I can, still can do anything. I do, okay. But anyway, I want to thank you, thank you, all my heart for all, all the effort you can, you have done for me, and, okay, what? But I never forget Helena, it's always be, I call home Helena. Yeah. Okay, 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 thank, thank you, thank you, thank you, all my heart, and all my wonderful friend, I mean, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, Ms. Wong, on behalf of the Helena City Commission, we congratulate you on this day, and we hope you will enjoy your family that joined you on this day, and we wish you luck and much prosperity. Commissioners, any final?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really briefly, I just wanted to say that there is a generation of Helena citizens who have had just a profound impact on the special place that we get to call home, and Flora Wong is one of those exceptional people and a true matriarch of our community. I think only Flora could bring this kind of turnout to a Helena City Commission meeting. She's truly done it all, an entrepreneur, leader, beloved mother, author, elite athlete, and she's just an example of the very best of Helena and humanity, and I'm just so delighted that we are able to honor her today with all of, all of these special people in, in our, our community. So congratulations, Flora, and we all love you so much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just extremely briefly, I remember reading about Flora about 10 years ago when, as a somewhat older athlete myself, I was seeking inspiration, and as a person who's moving her way up through the age brackets, it is a true honor to meet Flora and to be a part of this today. So thank you so much for all of your inspiration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Flora, thank you very much, and we're, we're just incredibly honored to have you here today. Thank you very much, and you're right, Helena is our, is a great place to live. Thanks.
At this time, if you want to leave, you may leave, or I'm not saying you can't stay for our meeting. Our meeting would just be another three hours, so you can stay if you want. No, that's okay. She didn't want, she grabbed that? Ready? Danae, can you put this up a little bit?
Can you? Volume? Okay.
Consent Agenda, One Motion, Claims. Commissioners? Okay. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm here in place of Sheila Danielson. So I, I move to approve claims paid from April 24, 2024 through June 28, 2024. Checks numbered 199424 through 200771, and ACH is numbered 178 through 431, for a grand total of $7,666,455.97. It should be noted that checks numbered 199624 through 199852, and ACH is numbered 180 through 409 were never used or voided due to Tyler number assignment and printer errors.
Thank you. Commissioners? Any comments? Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve Consent Agenda, Item A, Claims.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Bid awards, Consider Bid Awards for Benton Avenue Turn Lanes. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is the Benton Turn Lane Project. It's been before you a few times, and we brought this to you. This was tabled prior, and this is the, the call back for this project. As we discussed in the administrative meeting, our original recommendation was the base bid in alternate number one to get the east side pretty much complete with curb and gutter, and we were asked to, to explore some different alternatives for that administrative meeting. And what we did is we went and looked at what we had, because we spent time and money on the design, and basically what the alternatives that we brought forward to you was to do intersection improvements, using, for the most part, the design plans that were there. There's going to have to be some adjustments, so there will be some design costs included in there. But based on the last meeting, we're recommending to reject this bid so that we can go back and reconfigure the project as was discussed in the administrative meeting, and then go out and rebid that in accordance with how those new bid items look. It is, it, it does look like, you know, it will stay within the budgeted amount with the reduced project, but I would be happy to answer any questions concerning this project.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Director Knopki, what is the timeline on the next bid? Like, how long do you expect that to take?
Mayor and Commissioners, we could probably bid it, you know, late summer, early fall, but construction won't commence until next, next summer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Director Knopki, so we'll have to start having additional conversations with MDT about this newer design. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, that's correct. They originally approved this for the 11-foot lanes, and to stay within the existing asphalt to do 10-foot lanes, we'd have to go back and talk with them and see what their position is. I did try to reach out to them and was unsuccessful in the short timeframe between Wednesday and this, and today, so, but we'll be getting on that if that's the direction that we're given.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Director Knopki. Given the new timeline, is this a project that could, excuse me, theoretically go, I don't know what the process language is, but could this become something the MPO considered as part of a larger project on that sort of connective corridor area, or no?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, it could be considered by the MPO, but right now, the, what's on the agenda for the MPO for the next 12 to 18 months is the LRTP, so we would be looking at a delay and then having to prioritize this project within the MPO to try to, to do the project. But remember, the MPO is planning, and the, and the planning dollars are what's spent for the MPO. The planning dollars have pretty much already been spent for this, and now we're looking for implementation, so the monies that would be used for that would be local dollars, not the MPO.
Okay. Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to deny the Benton Avenue Turn Lane Project Base Bid in Alternate Number One to Helena Sand and Gravel, and...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Pat Drynan. I'm the General Manager, Vice President of Helena Sand and Gravel, and I just come before you just to express some frustration over this process, and just to put it on record that this is the third time that we have now bid this project over the last five years. This is now the second time that we have been low and not been awarded the work. This is becoming kind of concern for the community, for the contracting community in Helena, that we are having a hard time getting subs to give us pricing without the guarantee that these jobs are going to go. And we understand when we bid a work that it's not guaranteed till the contract's awarded, but it's becoming a pattern. So between this, we would anticipate between ourselves and our subs over these three products, the three times that we've bid this project and the ADA project that ran down a similar path, that between our subs and us, between manpower, research, bid time, that, you know, we're, we're substantially putting money out there in hopes of this work coming, and it's just not there. So I would just hope that the next time this project comes to bid, that we are actually ready to bid this and actually construct this project, because it is a little bit tough to run a business. So in Helena, we employ about 140 individuals, and we have to keep them busy, and so that's, that's a difficult task, and we don't know if that works in front of us. And so I would just urge you that if you do reject this, the next bid that comes out for this project will be the fourth one. Let's have this one right. I mean, I just, that's, I implore you guys that we're to that point, and the contracting community is to that point in, in Helena, so.
Thank you. Okay, would you please?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to deny the Benton Avenue Turn Lanes Project Base Bid in Alternate Number One to Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of $524,655. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, sir. Communications Proposals from Commissioners. Resolution to Establish Friendly Relations Between City of Helena, Montana, United States of America, and Stepanivan Community of Lorimars, Republic of Armenia. Commissioners? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think that we'll probably get into this more, but I'm really excited to consider this resolution. I think that anytime we have...
Thank you. Okay, would you please?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to deny the Benton Avenue Turn Lanes Project base bid and alternate number one to Helena Sandan gravel in the amount of five hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, bid purchase award for wastewater treatment, bio-reactor mixer system bid. Director Leland and/or his representative.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
Engineer Clark here. This bid is for new mixers at the wastewater plant. We're going to upgrade the eighteen mixers that are there, buy two spares and the associated controls and mounting. And this project would be funded primarily by a State Local Infrastructure Partnership Act grant to the tune of two hundred and sixty-six thousand of the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the bid. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
Thank you. Commissioners? Any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to award the wastewater treatment plant bio-reactor mix bid purchase number twenty-four dash oh-seven to the lowest bidder, responsible bidder, Silent Water Solutions USA Inc. in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eleven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, sir. Communications proposals from Commissioners. Resolution to establish friendly relations between City of Helena, Montana, United States of America, and Stepan Ivanov Community of Lorimart, Republic of Armenia. Commissioners? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, um, think that we'll probably get into this more, but I'm really excited to, um, consider this resolution. I think that anytime we have an opportunity to, um, expand our relationships with multicultural communities is one that we should take, and, um, within the memo, I think it outlines it well, where it describes that this is an opportunity for exchanges and cooperation in the fields of economy, trade, education, culture, tourism, and infrastructure, um, and aiming to improve the quality of local democracy, ethical decision-making, and more citizen-oriented, inclusive, responsive, and transparent local governance.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments on this topic?
Uh, Mayor Collins, Members of the Commission, I'm David Hunter. I live at seventy-four Cloverview here in Helena. I serve on the Board of World Montana, the organization funded by the State Department who brought the, uh, members of Armenia here for the, for the visit to Helena. I should say, I've also worked for the National Democratic Institute in Armenia, so I have some familiarity with, um, with their form of government and what they're doing. I think we want to recognize too how unusual it is for the State Department to invite cities to do a sister-city relationship like this. I'm sure the mayor would speak that he was one of really only three or four mayors who were, who were there. So this is something they feel is important that they've invited us to participate in. I've taken some initiative to, I spoke with President Sec at Carroll College, I spoke with the Executive Director at the, um, uh, both at the Myrna Loy and at the Archie Bray about whether or not they would be willing to be helpful. They all have an interest in doing it, because I think if we move forward, it's just not the city commission and the mayor, it's, you know, members of the community. We really have to, uh, uh, work on making this a relationship. I, I want to let you know that I personally will do that. I think that World Montana is willing to be helpful, and I think there are other organizations in Helena that would be interested and excited about participating. So certainly, I, uh, I support the resolution, and I think it's a, I think it's a good opportunity for, um, for Helen, and a good opportunity for us to reach out to a part of the world that, uh, that needs America's support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Look at that guy, just for you.
That's a little scary. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission and staff. My name's Jeffrey T. Berry. I'm the President of World Montana, and I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Mayor and Tim Burton for helping World Montana over the years with a variety of folks that have been visiting our city. That's very much appreciated. Just, I went on CIA.gov before I came here, that's, and they have what's called a World Factbook, and to look up a few facts about Armenia. It was ruled by the Romans, had the Byzantine Empire, the Arab Empire, the Persians, the Ottomans, and the Russian Empire. It's three, thirty thousand square miles roughly. Uh, I think that's about ten times the size of Lewis and Clark County, and about twenty percent the size of Montana. The highest mountain's thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen feet, and the population's three million. I would encourage you to look at that website, because it goes through a whole variety of what's going on in their country with their, in their society. But I just want to say, I think it's a good idea. I mean, uh, two years ago, we had another contingent from Armenia here, and they were members of the National Assembly, members of Parliament, and, uh, I think Mayor Collins spoke with them also. And we did such a good job here that they sent another group over. And, uh, and they were very interesting folks. It's very far away, who knows where, you know, when I first heard about it two years ago, of course, I had to go to a map to look where Armenia is, and it's a small country, but it has a, just a fascinating history, and hopefully some of that will rub off on them, and some of us will rub off on them. So we support this, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any others? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution to establish friendly relations between the City of Helena, Montana, United States of America, and Stefan Ivanov Pan Community in Lorimart, Republic of Armenia.
A second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. All right, report of the City Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I do have a report tonight. It was requested by Commissioner Logan and then also by City Manager, the report on Johnson versus Grants Pass decision by the U.S. Supreme Court. Was a much-awaited decision issued on June twenty-eighth of this year. It's been widely reported, but not always accurately described. The decision itself is pretty basic. The U.S. Supreme Court held, and I will quote, "The enforcement of generally applicable laws regulating camping on public property does not constitute cruel and unusual punishment prohibited by the Eighth Amendment." The kind of punishments that they looked at in Grants Pass, which was the subject of this decision and the lower court decision, were limited fines for first-time offenders, barring, orders barring individuals from occupying, uh, places where they had slept or, or camped regularly, and then for repeat offenders, a maximum of thirty days in jail. This was, these, this is common penalties for similar infractions across the country. Uh, and indeed, I'll go through Helena's ordinance. There are similar ordinances here. In, in deciding this way, the court reversed the decision of the lower courts about the cruel and unusual punishment, Eighth Amendment, um, basically saying that it is, it is up to municipalities and state governments to decide how it wants to handle sleeping or camping within the cities, even when the persons doing it have no other places to go. The court in overturning this decision basically said the Eighth Amendment was intended for prohibiting the meth, or looking at prohibiting the methods or kinds of punishments, and not whether or not a government can criminalize those actions in the first place. The result is that the city now can make policy decisions on how to handle situations within the, uh, within the boundaries and populate, with the population of its city, and it's not a constitutional issue anymore whether or not a penalty would be in violation of the cruel and unusual punishment. The Helena ordinance says, it's very basic, it says it's unlawful to camp or sleep overnight in any public park, park, walkway, boulevard, greenway, open space area, or beneath any public bridge within or adjacent to any of the areas identified herein without the written permission of the Director of Parks and Rec or his designated representative. And the penalty for that is a general penalty for all violations of city code, which is a fine up to five hundred dollars, and for more offenses, imprisonment for six months in the Lewis and Clark County Detention Center. So that's all I have. There's a lot more detail than that in the, um, in the decision, and I can answer any questions on that, but that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Attorney, Doctor, Commissioners. Any comments or questions? Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Collins, with your permission, I'd like to invite Director Knopki up to give a very brief overview on a transportation issue that developed recently in, in town.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Promise this the last time you see me?
Yeah, right.
Um, at approximately four-thirty a.m. on Sunday morning, the signal at Mini Malfunction Junction had a catastrophic failure. We're not sure what caused the failure, but the wires inside the cabinet and to the poles somehow burnt, overloaded. I don't, we're not sure if it was a overload, you know, lightning strike, whatever. That being said, it, it's, it's broken, and it's going to be broken for a while. So we do have all-way stop signs put up. We are in contact with contractors to try to get temporary signals up there. Um, you know, part of the reason that not just to go straightforward and replace everything is, as you're aware, we're looking at converting that signalized, um, intersection to a roundabout. So, you know, we may be coming forward to you in the future to ask to accelerate that project so we don't spend the money to replace the signal that's going to get torn out in, you know, in the next year or two. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, um, and thanks for the update, Director Knopki. It was, I was just driving along on Sunday, and I came across, and that was surprising. Um, one thing that I, and the project that has been discussed for about well over a year, um, and in multiple plans, including our multimodal, um, study that we adopted about two years ago, includes transitioning to a roundabout. In terms of speeding that up, do we think that that's something that could be considered even for like this fall?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, um, not really, because we have to finish up the design work.
Okay.
So, you know, if we were to able to go do this, and if we were able to get a consultant on board to be able to fast-track this, you know, the hope would be, we design and do, um, additional, a little bit additional outreach. We've already done a lot, um, over the, you know, this fall and winter, in hopes that we'd have bid documents in the spring or early summer so that we could get moving on the project and, um, hopefully have the interruptions as least as possible.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, just one thought. I would even be in favor of maybe considering, um, like, holding a few public work sessions or something once we have maybe the final design, like this fall or winter, and then bidding, going out to bid as soon as possible, because I, just for the reason that I think, I mean, we hear frustration from contractors who bid, and I think this Benton Avenue Turn Lanes is a great example. I mean, I think it was included in the budget even before I was on the commission in, like, FY nineteen. Is that somewhere around there?
Somewhere around there.
Nineteen, twenty? Um, and we get to a point where, you know, then there's some disagreement about how to move forward or what to consider, and I think if we can maybe front-load some of those discussions, um, so that we can go to bid on a solution earlier, um, so that we have all of the next construction season to get it wrapped up, it might actually correspond well with the completion of the museum as well, um, in, in providing better connectivity to downtown. But, um, that's something that I would be interested in, is any way that we can start moving this a little bit more quickly.
Okay. Any other comments from the Commission? Manager Burton, are you, are you done?
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Nancy Perry, you have the floor. Um, Madam Clerk, is she online? Yes, I see her there.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is Nancy Perry from HCC District Two. Our last meeting was June twenty-sixth. Our next meeting will be July twenty-fourth, and today I want to talk to you about the HCC Outreach Committee. We have been busy this spring and summer. So members of the public can easily contact their HCC district representative for help. Our webpage is easy to find, and Peggy Benkelman makes sure it's always up to date. So from the webpage, the resident can learn which HCC district he lives in, and the names and contact information for his four representatives. So it's easy for the public to contact us if they know of our existence. The Outreach Committee's job is to make the public aware of the existence of HCC, and I know that sounds silly, but when we go to various places and set up an HCC table, most thing that we hear from people is, what is the HCC? So we're continually looking for ways to meet residents, explain the purpose of HCC, and then add their names and contact information to our list of Helena residents. This spring, we produced a new brochure and some snazzy ballpoint pens with our logo on them to introduce ourselves, and we're also exploring how we could use yard, yard signs to catch people's attention. Finally, we're setting up a table at various public events where we hope to meet members of the public and tell them about HCC. You may see us this coming Friday evening at the Art Walk. Our table's going to be in front of Birds and Beesle's, or if you're at the farmer's market this coming Saturday, we're going to be set up with our table in Women's Park. If you see us, please stop by and say hello. I may have a new brochure and one of those snazzy pens for you, and that's all I have, sir, unless you have a question.
Thank you, Representative Perry. Comments or questions? Thank you. Regular items. Consider a resolution establishing the City of Helena as a member of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities. Um, I see, is Executive Assistant Reinhardt or Director Brink, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I was hoping Tim would take the lead, but he didn't jump up real quick. So as you recall, um, at the last admin meeting on the twenty-sixth, um, membership in the AARP Age-Friendly Network of Communities was brought up and discussed with, with you at that meeting. That network means that a community's elected leadership has made a strong commitment to actively work with residents and local advocates to make their town, city, county, and or state an age-friendly place to live. There's no fee to join, as we stated, um, at that meeting, but it is a commitment for a multi-year process to, to move through that, to be established as an age-friendly community. Should the community, should the Commission approve this pursuit, um, of course, we'll have to, uh, we're asking for you to, to provide a commitment letter, uh, signed by you, Mayor Collins, uh, as well as a, a resolution, kind of laying out the commitment that the City of Helena is about to make through this journey. Outreach Director Nancy Anderson came last week as well, and she may have some words for you after I conclude, but we do ask that you consider joining the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities. Just as a highlight, membership in this network will help local leaders, myself and our team and Manager's Office, to help identify and understand community needs. It will serve as an organizing structure for making community improvements relative to age-friendly improvements. It will foster partnerships among community groups and local stakeholders, provides leadership and opportunity, leadership opportunities for volunteers, and enable changes, enables changes that benefit people of all ages, not just age-friendly, or not just our older adults. Membership provides a community like Helena with a public recognition that we've made a commitment to becoming age-friendly, provides us resources for identifying and assessing community needs, provides us opportunities to access, or access to technical assistance and expert-led webinars and support, and best-practice materials from AARP. So to conclude, Mayor Collins, Commission, Staff recommends that, that you move to approve a resolution establishing the City of Helena as a member of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities, and provide a support letter signed by you, Mayor Collins, to AARP Montana, requesting that we participate in their age-friendly network.
Thank you, Director Brink. Commission, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to voting for this. I, uh, for sixty-six years, AARP's done really good work. I keep getting cards for some reason, I don't know why, but, uh, I'll still vote for it, so, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
They're planning ahead, that's why.
Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. I just wanted to note, there's a, a statistic that we have included in the mayor's draft letter, um, and includes that the Helena and Lewis and Clark County populations are older than the national averages, with nearly forty percent of Helena residents ages fifty and older. We obviously are going to see that shift in Montana, and I wouldn't even say it's a shift, in continued increase in, in, um, population that is of retirement age throughout our state, particularly in a place like Helena, and I think it's really important for us to, um, plan accordingly. Um, I don't... for us to plan accordingly. I don't think we could be, we couldn't be adopting this at a better time, considering that we are just starting our long-range transportation plan. And so really excited to be able to collaborate on that, as well as the land use plan that's happening on the community development side. I think being able to use the tenants of ARP's livable communities will be a very helpful roadmap, and hopefully one that we can start some community conversations about. So very excited for this and excited to collaborate in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution establishing the City of Helena as a member of the AARP Network of Age Friendly Communities and approving a letter of support from Mayor Collins to AARP Montana.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Okay. You bet. Consider a resolution of intention to increase the fee charged for the use of the firing range at the Helena Regional Airport. Chief Petty, you have the floor.
No walk-up music, I guess. All right. I I get it. Mayor, Commission, good evening.
Good evening.
We are here considering a resolution of intention to increase the fee charge for the use of the firing range at the Helena Regional Airport. Currently, the fee is ten dollars per person that uses the range out there. We're looking at going to a hundred dollars a half day, two hundred dollars to a full day. That would run parallel, similar to what Fort Harrison is doing. Reason for the fee increase is, one, it's been since 2007. Two, the maintenance out there, every time we have folks show up and shoot, it tears up the range. We replace the lumber that hold the targets, the target backing. We have to do a lot of improvements to that range to keep it up to par, to make sure we're able to qualify our officers. Plus, the county uses it quite regularly as well. So that is why we're here tonight. We're hoping that some of that cost will take away from some of that maintenance, so we're not dipping into that general fund budget as much with the maintenance of the gun range. So I'd move to approve a resolution of intention to increase the fee charged for use of the firing range at the Helena Regional Airport and to set a public hearing for July 29, 2024. And I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Chief. Comments from the Commission? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I am fully supportive of this. I think that as much as we can reduce the increased cost to the police department's general fund budget, the better. One thing I was wondering, could you maybe talk a little bit about some of the groups that do utilize this, who will be impacted by the increased fee?
Yes. The, so all law enforcement agencies from the local area, from MHP to LCSO, HPD, then you have the state law enforcement that come out there, that's DCI, and all their agents come out there. One of the biggest, I would say, I guess, call them customers, would be the Academy. So they have three sessions a year. They're out there for three weeks that they take up the range three times a year, and they usually run about twenty cadets each week out there. So we used to charge ten dollars a shooter, twenty times ten, it would be the two hundred dollars for the full day. They would get charged the same. We're looking for those those side folks that come out and they're running four people through, and they're taking up range time from other people, so they would get charged a hundred, the half, or two hundred for the full day.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you, Chief. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to increase the fee charged for using the firing range at the Helena Regional Airport and to set a public hearing for July 29, 2024.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider the passage of resolution of intention to set fees charged and collected by the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. Repeal Resolution Number 11093 and to set a public hearing date. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commission. If you'll allow me to sit on my due presentation. So tonight before you is a proposal, a resolution of intention like you stated, to to set the fees charged by community development. As I mentioned at the admin meeting last week, our current fees were adopted January of 1997. That was twenty-seven years, five months, and twenty-seven years, four months, and whatever the balance of that is. It's been a while. It is past time that we do. It is past time that we reevaluate our fees so that we can lessen the burden on the general fund to provide these services. It is still valuable that general fund does take this responsibility on because it is a planning function, and it is a benefit of the entire city. But I think that the burden is swayed in terms of it's it's a bigger impact to the general fund than to a developer or to an applicant. So this table just outlines what our current fees are, very minimal, very basic, again, has not changed in twenty-seven years. Our proposed fees, you can see it well on the screen above you, we are asking that our fees be set or be implemented in three years. So we'll roll that out in three years, starting with the adoption of the final resolution here, hopefully in a few months, and then at each budget season, beginning of fiscal year, a nominal increase until we get to the total fee increase. The reason for the total fee increase as proposed is our goal was to capture half of our our cost to do the work, which we call the recovery cost. So we are, we have pegged half of that cost as the the final, the final fee in year three, which will be fiscal year 2027. Just as an example, or as comparison, and as I mentioned at the admin meeting last week or so, even though we are proposing increases, we are still sometimes half of what our next city is in comparison as billings. We are typically half of what their fees are. Graphical representation or map, just kind of outlining how we are in relationship at final adoption. This will be in year three, what our fees will look like compared to our sister cities in the western part of the state. Again, just by comparison with the graphic, we are still smaller than, except for Kalispel in most cases, smaller than what all our other cities will be for preliminary plat fees, final plat fees. I didn't provide all of them here, just a sample, and then our zone change fees, still well within what all the cities are compared to, or in comparison with with billings being where we come in closely aligned with. A question that that came up from a Commission when we presented this at our at our budget budget presentation for community development is how can we incorporate a smaller or discount, particularly for for CUP fees, for other nonprofits, housing project, mom or pop businesses or home-based businesses? As I stated then, and as you know, planning staff takes the approach that we are consistently reviewing the land use section of our zoning ordinance, specifically the land use table. You'll see some of that tonight as well, where we try to eliminate when it's warranted, the imposition of of the CUP process and the in the in the entitlement process, and establish more uses by right. So we're trying at every turn, trying to eliminate a fair amount of requests through the CUP process and make them by right. We anticipate that we'll, we're going to even take a more in-depth review, particularly as we try to get in line with Senate Bill 382 and the Montana Land Use Planning Act. At that point, we'll do a full review of our zoning ordinance, again, looking at CUPs, where we're going to reserve those for more oversight for certain uses relative to that use in the zoning district. And as a side note, for home-based businesses, home occupations, we do not require a CUP or a zoning process for those. They are as as right, as by right. And then staff brought this up last week at the admin meeting for consideration. Should we consider the adoption of a fee waiver or discount as a city commission action item, similar to what we do for building permit fee waivers for affordable housing? We're open. We're open to formulate a waiver or discount. I had hoped to have something for you tonight to look at. I just wasn't able to 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 bring that all together. We're still researching options. One would be to provide a waiver for affordable housing, kind of like we do for our building permit fees, whereby there's a fee waiver cap and and we set the period of affordability in that, and it's in the ordinance. Of course, this is going to impact the general fund because we are a general fund department, whereas the building fund is a separate fund. And it will impact it, but minimally, of course, our fees are are small in comparison to what the overall breadth of fees are across the city, including infrastructure review, water sewer taps, street openings, street improvements, sidewalk permits, all the other necessary permits that are required for development. We're just one small piece of that. So we've bounced around the idea in the office to provide a combination fee. Right now, we have a combination fee similar for pre-zoning annexations, where we take the higher of the two and then split the the lower fee in half to come up with combination fee. That's how it's currently done. In the proposed fee schedule, we've taken the the recovery cost, and that is a two-thirds of that recovery cost for that combination fee. We'll take a similar approach for CUPs and zone change, amended plats and variances. So we're going to take a look at perhaps combining some of these fees when they're joint processes to reduce the burden for for those instances, doing what we can. Then, again, like I mentioned, similar language as we do for the building permit fee, I won't read this verbatim, but for affordable housing projects, we have a fee waiver process already established. Perhaps we look and at open up the TIF Affordable Housing Trust, the TIF Affordable Housing Set Aside. There's a ten percent of whatever the balance of that TIF fund is that that should or is set aside for affordable housing request. Perhaps we allow part of that to go for planning review fees or entitlement fees. Similar for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, perhaps we open up that as somebody can tap in those funds to be used for for some of our entitlement processes. And then, too, we've we've been it around based on conversation from last week, perhaps there's consideration for nonprofits or other projects to have a fee waiver that has a definable and quantifiable public benefit. Just some suggestions. We don't know what this is going to look like. We're asking you to set the public hearing for a month from now. So within that time, we should have something pretty solid to bring for you for consideration as we're doing the the public engagement, public outreach piece in the next month for our fee waivers as well, which is this, which is this slide right here. So we've had a proposed fee schedule on our city website, community development, but moving forward prior to August 12th, we're going to use all of our tools and resources we have to to get this out to the public, social media. We're going to put something on our civic access page. I've already built it. I've just got to turn it on. Webpages, we're hoping that the local media will reach out and ask us questions. And then everything that's in the public participation plan, we're going to utilize that as well. So. Any questions?
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to thank Director Brink for providing this overview, but more specifically, I know how much analysis went into all of this, and it was something that was started a few years ago, and I kind of languished until the last year or so. So very grateful to you. I, as I noted in the admin meeting, I am very much in favor of the discussion and consideration of a fee waiver for or discounts for affordable housing projects. I really like this idea about set aside or use for the TIF set aside for housing. I think that is one of those uses of TIF funds that has been very much underutilized, even though we have it in the resolution. So I think this could be a creative way to hopefully incentivize greater use of those TIF funds for affordable housing. The one question I had, and correct me if I'm wrong, so we are in this cost recovery, the methodology is that it's really fifty percent of the cost recovery. Is that a similar methodology that other communities use? Or do we know?
Mayor, Commission, I'm all plead ignorant, I just don't know how they formulate their fees. Through my career, that's how I've formulated fees that that I've proposed and implemented, is, again, based on the general public should burden some of that or have some of that burden because it is a benefit for the public at large. But then the the developer is responsible for some of that because they're bringing it forward to us, right? So I've always, that's just what I've always used as analysis, is half of that cost. And previously, when staff, staff prior to me, I think in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, they use the same rationale as well.
I'm, I appreciate it. And I think that this is, we are, with this resolution, we are getting to a spot that creates more fairness between the general public and the staff time that's used and the developers are requiring to to approve these plans. So appreciate all the work, and I'm excited to see kind of where this goes before the next meeting.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Brink. I appreciate some of the, I know they're not final proposals for the fee waiver type things. I appreciate seeing some of the options. I will look forward to to what we come up with. And if I'm getting it correct, it seems like we might have a couple of different options, affordable housing and nonprofit. And again, the example I used from the admin meeting with the, you know, albeit unusual, but not necessarily completely unique example of the synagogue request. So what I would like to see is a couple of different scenarios without overburdening and making it overly bureaucratic, but a couple of options that could be used in the event that a project came up. Thanks.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, the agenda is so large that I have had a hard time loading it, so I shall hope I can read from here. I will move to approve the resolution of intent to set fees charged and collected by the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. Repeal Resolution Number 11093 and to set a public hearing date for August 12, 2024 at 6:00 p.m.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider first passage of an ordinance revising the regulations of signs by amending Chapter 23, Title 11 of the Helena City Code, by repealing and replacing Chapter 23 Generous Signs Regulation in its entirety and adopting this new Chapter 23 Sign Regulation and leeward thereof and to set a public hearing date. Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. As introduced, I am Michael Alvarez, a planner with the Community Development Department. And my item tonight is a new Chapter 23 of Title 11 concerning the regulation of signs. So tonight I'll be going over the city's authority to establish, regulate, and make changes to the city sign code, the current state of the sign regulations, and significant changes from the existing sign code. the current state of the sign regulations, and significant changes from the existing sign code. Specifically tonight, the city commission will be voting for, against, or to table our first passage of an ordinance that amends Chapter 23 of Title 11 of the Helena City Code by repealing Chapter 23 General Sign Regulations in its entirety and adopting this new Chapter 23 Sign Regulations in lieu thereof. There are recommended conditions attached to this ordinance that will be listed at the end. The authority to regulate signs comes from State Code, Section 7214206, which gives the city control over the erection of both on- and off-premises signs and awnings. Section 7515104 gives the city more specific power to further regulate off-premise signage, billboards, in ways that are more restrictive than state law. The city sign code is being reviewed in large part because of the Reed versus Town of Gilbert Supreme Court decision. This decision requires content neutrality from the city sign code. The city can still regulate the things that our sign code proposes, such as size and location, distinguish between lit and unlit signs, fixed and electronic changeable copy sign, private and public property, commercial and residential property, and on- and off-premises signs, restricting the number of signs and governmental signs. On your screen are a couple of pictures from the Reed case. Without going into too much detail tonight, the Town of Gilbert was sued for imposing a different time limit on the sign on the right from the temporary signs up around the town, the other ones on the left. So the Town of Gilbert was allowing different types of speech to have different sizes of signs and to have those signs erected for different lengths of time. SCOTUS's ruling says that that wasn't content neutral. And so for us, what this means is that content neutrality has to be maintained in our code. On that note, the current sign code poses several issues for the city. There is the aforementioned Reed versus Town of Gilbert decision that requires the sign code be written content neutral, and elements of the current code are not content neutral. The code handles wall signage on larger buildings in a way that generates frequent applications for variance. The code is difficult to read. It can be non-obvious what sections pertain to a given sign that somebody wants to put up. The code has outdated references to zone types and administrative areas no longer in use, and the code hasn't been updated comprehensively since 1997. I apologize. I don't have the exact number of years and months. But it may not reflect the current goals and objectives of the city as stated in the growth policy. So aims of the new code are to improve that clarity in the signage regulation to increase conformance with recent legal rulings and to ensure the current needs of the community are being met. So towards improving clarity, the new signed ordinance introduces easy-to-understand tables for permitted and unpermitted sign types and faces by district. For instance, Table 1 and 2, seen here, differentiate sign types by whether they are located on the building or elsewhere on the site. Table 3 of that same section, not pictured here, deals with the face type of the signage. The new signed ordinance introduces simple design guidelines by sign type, for instance, wall signage shown here. And that's a sneak preview. One of your conditions will be to change that 8% to 15% recommended changes. Improving, the new signed ordinance has eliminated references to administrative areas no longer in use or in conflict with other areas of the code. For instance, this passage, which gives the Board of Adjustments power they aren't granted elsewhere, and refers to the OSR, NC, B3, and Urban Renewal Districts, which are all either defunct or out of use. So the intent statement for the sign code is up on your screen. I previously discussed the Reed decision that shaped this intent statement, but I just want to reiterate here the content neutrality as a priority in the crafting of this proposed sign code, and that's captured in the intent statement. One of the key changes being made to the sign standards is that signs will scale with the building facades in most commercial districts. Moving forward, under the proposed code, architects and designers will be allowed to scale signage up to 15% of each facade. The proposed code further builds on offering flexibility to businesses by introducing a planned sign program provision that allows for coordinating signage size on larger multi-building developments. So hardcapping, and here are examples. They're not in order. The top is 12 and 1/2%, the middle is 30, and the bottom is 10%. In your packets, there is another example there at 3%, where the sign is quite small, which was the original suggestion. Hardcapping wall signage in aggregate for all sides of a building in B2 at 200 square feet has frequently seen businesses apply for and receive variances to allow signage that is better matched to the size of their facades and to surrounding neighbors that also have large facades and have already been granted such variances. While the previous granting of a variant doesn't automatically mean such variants will be granted again, practically speaking, not granting similar variants in a similar location opens the city to scrutiny over arbitrary and capricious decisions. So functionally, for the larger box stores in town, we really haven't had 200 square feet on the books for some time. The proposed sign code will bring the business of billboards into alignment with the rest of the business community by requiring that billboards operated in the city limits obtain business permits. Currently, all businesses operate in the city of Helena. We've licensed each location where their business is conducted, but billboard locations have historically been left out of that accounting. The building business permit allows the city to control the number and type of billboard faces in the community. This will introduce, for the first time, a mechanism to possibly sweep out the number of billboards or to control the future erection of them. The fee would be paid to the general fund, and the amount is intended to help cover the cost of running the program. So it is intended to be in line also with our fee increases, where we're trying to be more self-sustaining as a department. The proposed sign code will implement new light standards. Electronic message displays must have ambient light monitors that automatically adjust their brightness and shall not exceed .3-foot candles above ambient light when measured according to Table 4, which is in your code and in your packets. Scrolling, traveling, or flashing night images will not be permitted, and on-premise sign may only change the entire static image once every two seconds, and a digital billboard once every seven and 1/2 seconds, which is the current standard. So the city's lighting ordinance, since this was raised in the admin meeting, currently covers signs, however, is more tailored to lights than signs. So summary of that lighting ordinance, where it deals with signage or applicable to signage, lights brighter than the equivalent of a 150-watt bulb need a horizontal cutoff, excepting signs in commercial areas. So this means for our code that electronic message centers who LEDs can't have horizontal cutoffs can't be placed in residential zones. Light trespass from any light source begins at .5-foot candles measured at the property boundary. The sign code weighs in the factor of whether the sign causes a detriment to any property or impacts the peaceful use of a residence as well. The maximum height of a sign has been lowered by one foot in some commercial zones and now matches the lighting ordinance. That change also makes for just better clarity in the code. It was a little bit strange that some zones were at 34 feet and some at 35. Just sort of random. The maximum illumination of 30 candle feet in a commercial zone does apply to signs, but that is actually sort of the lighting that you would want to see in a manufacturing space or on a basketball court or something that is super bright. And a sign that was that bright is probably on fire. So the current community needs assessment, the growth policy evaluation. The city of Helena here is seeking to promote business while embracing the uniqueness and natural beauty of Helena's setting. So goal one here is looking to promote and sustain Helena's economic vitality. And goal 10, which is looking for us to do so in different zones and neighborhood centers and consider aesthetics. It also applies to objectives 69, 76, and 85. This is, again, talking about preserving historic and cultural and aesthetically significant features, supporting appropriate land use patterns that promote compatible, well-designed development, and foster the long-term fiscal health of the community, and also just reducing functional and visual impacts in the entryway corridors. That specifically, that applies mostly to the bigger signage in town that we see. So this ordinance is tentatively scheduled to have its public hearing on August 12th, 2024. And on your screen now is the recommended motion language with the conditions, specifically that the area of allowable wall signage in Section 11239 be changed from 8% to 15%. That the word "district" be added to 11236H so that it's not, instead of just a residential activity, and that a non-conforming on-premise, specifying that it's an on-premise sign, shall cease to be used when the business activity, et cetera, in 11237E. An amendment there. Thank you, and would happily take your questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Alvarez, thank you very much for this thorough presentation. I have a question regarding the new lighting ordinance or the proposed ordinance and how it could address or affect backlit signs. I didn't hear you talk about that. Could you speak a little bit to how this ordinance could affect backlit signs? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. So the new lighting ordinance specifies a similar sort of penalty, or it's still an infraction for a backlit sign to disturb the peace by reason of brilliance. It has the same language that's in the current code. The .3-foot candles and that distance for measuring is specifically for the electronic message centers. It's, the lighting ordinance in Title 10, that .5-foot candle for light trespass is still how we would go after a backlit sign that somebody is complaining about. So how we're handling the total light output of a backlit sign isn't really changing. What we're doing that's new is addressing the electronic message centers.
Any others? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Thank you, Planner Alvarez. Oh. Is that public comment?
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, good evening. I'll be brief. My name is Rebecca Harbage. I live at 914 Dearborn Avenue here in Helena, and I'm here tonight as the zoning commission chair. I just wanted to make a few comments in support of this revised sign code. Letting you know, essentially, this is the result of a very long and thoughtful process. The zoning commission began this process in March of last year, so 2023, and that picked up where a previous commission left off back in 2015. I want to thank Michael, who did the heaviest lifting on this. He really did a lot of work to bring this forward and shepherd this through over 10 work sessions with significant stakeholder input. And then I know we have some folks from the sign industry here tonight, and we have gotten to know them pretty well over the last year. I want to just thank them also for their time and dedication in making sure that we got this right. We definitely don't agree on all of the points in the amended code that you have before you, but I do appreciate their professional, respectful, educational conversations that they brought before the zoning commission at our work sessions. And then thanks also to the numerous members of the community who submitted public comments on both sides of this issue. This update, as you heard, is long overdue. It's been a while since the sign code has been updated. I think we need this amendment, not just because there are legal concerns, also because there are new forms of signage that have not been considered under previous code. There are a number of variances, as you heard from Planner Alvarez before the Board of Adjustments. That means something's not working in our current code. And then continued development in Helena means that there is more and more possibility of conflicts in land use. And so if we can get this right and reassess, re-center on the vision that's outlined in the growth policy, that's really what the zoning commission tried to do with this code. We really thought about centering this on the vision that includes scenic attraction, open spaces, aesthetics, preservation of Helena's unique setting, breathtaking views, all while balancing economic opportunity and, of course, the opportunity of our businesses, business community, to advertise what they want to do and what they offer to the community as well. I think we hit the right balance with the code that's before you, and I hope that you consider passing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have one hand.
Come on.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Commission. I would like to first introduce myself. I'm Ally Carley with Lamar Advertising, a billboard company all throughout the country, but I handle the state of Montana. I'd also like to thank city staff and the zoning commission for all you guys' hard work on this. It was, it is greatly appreciated. I'm going to pull up my notes because I left my printed copy at home, so I apologize. So as the zoning commission mentioned, we don't agree on all the points of this. One point I'd like to bring up is that we, in the outdoor industry, oppose the annual permit fee that you guys are considering implementing. No other community within the state of Montana does an annual permit fee on billboards. We pay an initial permit fee, which generally, in most communities, is substantially higher. And as you guys heard earlier, is there is some increased permit fees. Just raise this a little bit. There's some increased permit fees coming from the city commission or from the city staff. You know, we would ask that the initial fees be increased versus an annual permit fee. Again, in the state of Montana and every other community in the surrounding states, there is no annual permit fee. I've worked in multiple markets across Lamar, and I haven't seen it as well. So I know it is done throughout the country, but very minimally. We also would like to ask, if we were to do an annual permit fee, where is this money exactly going towards? They said the general fund. So my question would be, is it going into the general fund or is it going to the sign code enforcement? And then is it just off-premise that's paying this fee? Or are on-premise signs also paying that fee? So off-premise is your traditional billboards that you see along the roadways. On-premise, of course, is the signs on business. So my question would be, are they paying an annual fee as well? Or is this just targeted, is how we feel? Don't mean to use that word, but towards billboards. And then we also, on section, and I'll pull up my note right here as well, in Section 112311J, so at the very end of the ordinance, where it talks about discontinuance, we also oppose that because it's very similar to amortize, the removal of billboards without just compensation. And so that's how we read this ordinance. We would ask that to be removed. At Lamar, we donate billboard space all the time to nonprofits. I actually met with the Education Foundation earlier today to do some type of donation for them. We also believe to leave the communities we're within and we operate in better than we found them. And that comes straight from our CEO. So we want to continue to be able to donate locations to all sorts of nonprofits throughout the state and in Helena. We also work with a lot of local businesses who advertise.
Would you wrap up? You're given two minutes for public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will wrap up. We just want to continue to be able to do business as usual. And again, we would oppose those two issues. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any others on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this issue today. My name is Bob Alvarez. I represent Yesco Outdoor Media. We're a billboard company here in Montana. We're also a business owner here in the city of Helena. We're also a business owner here in the city of Helena. First and foremost, we wanted to thank Michael Alvarez and the other zoning commissioners. They're absolutely fabulous in this process, allowing us to be engaged and really be be part of the discussion. So again, thank you for that. As indicated, there are a few areas of concern we just wanted to to bring up on the final draft. A bit redundant, but the 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 fees and the penalties seem to be excessive and unique in the state of Montana, so there are no other agencies in the state that are offering these type of cost measures. We question how it's going to be tracked and managed, and are those fees really going to be offsetting the cost of managing this new process? Again, other agencies seem to be operating without this in place. There's a reference that the permits can be auctioned off based on the city commissioners' and public hearing. We just want to know what that looks like. It's also a bit contradictory to section B6, which is essentially trying to eliminate billboards in the in the city. So that that's just an area of concern. Section E1A indicates that signs cannot be 432 square feet in size, or that's the maximum size. Anything larger than that would make it non-conforming. Montana Department of Transportation, their maximum size is 672 feet. So essentially, the great majority of our interstate boards are now going to become non-conforming. So if work needed to be done on one of those faces, it required us to make it substantially smaller, while the backside is going to be substantially larger. So I don't think aesthetically that's going to look the way you'd want it to look. So in that case, we just recommend you just match MDT's regulations as 672 square feet. And then lastly, lastly, section J, discontinuance. I question whether or not that can be done without compensation to the affected parties. And if, in fact, that's going to be a policy that's implemented, I just recommend that we have some sort of like warning system put in place if the billboards are going to be removed based on the the city's decision. So again, thank you very much. The team did a fabulous job, and we greatly appreciate the opportunity to work with on their behalf.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised. Jeff Young.
Could you please let him through? You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Mayor Collins and the City Commission, my name is Jeff Young. I represent Young Electric Sign Company, also known as Yesco. Bob works for our company. We have multiple divisions. I'm representing and want to speak to the on-premise side of the code and chime in as well and appreciate Michael Alvarez and the zoning commission's work to make this make this happen. I want to reference the letter was submitted this past day or so from James Carpenter from International Sign Association. I'd urge you to look that over. I'm supporting his the points he's made. I think Michael has done a tremendous job in discussing ambient light and this .3-foot candles above ambient light, which the industry, our the sign industry developed that standard. It's been been adopted by hundreds of communities very successfully. What we see is illuminated faces was was discussed a few minutes ago. Not a lot of complaints about translucent faces. They don't really they are not that bright. The electronics seem to be garner most of the attention. And since the current code is sitting at about four times more bright than the the code we're proposing here, we believe that that 25% of the of the output is going to make a significant difference. I will say, as we talk about the sign code and the brightness, it's interesting, we start talking about signs, and as you drive around town, your eye is immediately drawn to signs. You start noticing them. I would urge you to look at headlights on cars. They are anywhere from 20 to 30 times brighter than the code that we're proposing here. I have a knit gun, and it on high beams, the knit gun airs out at about 12,000 knits. And so headlights on cars are very bright, and they're also moving around. The only part of this code I'd ask you to consider to reconsider is are the lubers on our electronics are lubered on top? And with the brightness standards, we don't believe the curfew near residences is necessarily needed. The customers need those impressions. They pay for them online. They pay for them in media, and we know better than we ever have before what traffic counts are, given the technologies. And the 11:00 PM, the 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM curfew next to residences, we don't believe that's necessary. I would urge you to go to the following website. This is a supplier of ours. It's called Media Resources, mediaresources.com/siteline, S-I-T-E-L-I-N-E. They have a technology where the the light, horizontal light, at 37 degrees drops to black. It's a remarkable breakthrough, and if we were to apply this technology and bring it to Helena, I think you would notice a significant amount of the nuisance that comes from these types of signs would be mitigated. So with that, if I if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I would end my comments there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, next with his hand raised, I have Nathan Young.
You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I my name is Nathan Young. I work for Yesco Outdoor Media and am privileged enough to work shoulder to shoulder with Mr. Bob Alvarez. As an industry, I think Ally did a fantastic job, and so did Bob. I do not want to repeat what they said. We are in agreement with the points that made. The only comment for for me to this evening is simply thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Michael did a fantastic job and his team getting feedback, and they deserve to be recognized because we recognize that that doesn't always happen. And so thank you so much to them, and we hope that the points that we've made can be considered as this decision is elaborated upon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance revising the regulation of signs by amending Chapter 23, Title 11 of the Helena City Code by repealing and replacing Chapter 23 General Signs Regulation in its entirety and adopting this new Chapter 23 sign regulations in lieu thereof, with the condition that the area of allowable wall signage in section 11239 be changed from eight percent to 15%. The further condition that section 11236H be amended to read, quote, "Any on-premise electronic messages centers that are located within 300 feet of any residential zoning district must be automatically turned automatically turned off between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM daily," end quote. And the further condition that the section 11237E be amended to read, quote, "A non-conforming on-premise sign shall cease to be to be used when the business activity continues," end quote.
Second. Has been moved and seconded. Do we have any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I will support the the first passage. I do have one question. I'm sorry, I was hoping to ask the question before we we did the motion, but with regard to the annual fee versus a higher one-time fee, could could you just briefly tell me, was that considered and how did you end up with that final decision to do an annual fee versus a higher one-time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commission. So this is not a a building permit fee. This is to bring it in line with our business permitting fee. It's not targeting billboards. We license annually every location where business is conducted in the city except for billboards. They're actually an exception to the rule right now. So we're bringing them into the fold along with the the rest of our business permitting practices. As for the fee, it's paid to the general fund because our department is paid out of the general fund. We are not a fee-based department. And so but the idea is to cover our costs for running that program.
Mr. Mayor, just a very quick follow-up. I just I was struck by the fact that nowhere else in Montana does it this way. Was that a consideration when you were considering? I understand the alignment with other business fees. That makes sense to me, and yet it seems it seems to be noteworthy that we are the only place in Montana that does it this way. And so was that something you considered?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Yes. So part of that is also there aren't many billboards getting erected. It's, you know, probably once every five years. This would be an unfunded program if we were to rely on. This program monitors the the built environment. If we're relying on the next billboard to be built to pay for the program that monitors everything that's being built, it's an undue burden on the next one. Also, where it comes, part of where it comes from is, I believe, Director Brinkes has imported that from where his previous job.
Throw you on the bus. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to mention, I know last year, we all got a bunch of comments when this conversation started, and I just want to thank the zoning commission and the community development staff. We were having a conversation before the meeting, and and Michael Alvarez mentioned, you know, just the yeoman's work that you all do every day, and it's something you may not know that we do recognize, but we really do. We go back and watch your the recordings of your meetings all the time when we consider these decisions. And so just really want to thank you for all this work because it it is not easy, and I know you got a lot of public comment, and we appreciate the balance and thoughtfulness that you brought to this.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. It appears that an individual was attempting to make public comment earlier, and the app was not showing his hand is raised, so I would offer this opportunity to Mr. James Carpenter.
Hello, Mayor Collins and the City Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, even though we've got a little bit of tech issue that could be on my on my side or yours, I'm not sure. But I'm James Carpenter here on behalf of the Northwest Sign Council, representing the on-premises sign industry. And I'm just going to reiterate a little bit that's already been said by more than one person, just because I have to, I think, because the efforts that Michael Alvarez and the zoning commission have devoted to the sign code update have been extensive and noticed by myself and many others, just because it is extremely complex regulation to deal with. But however, we do have one important recommendation for your consideration, and and Jeff Young mentioned it a little bit, and I'm just going to reiterate it again. It's section 11236H, sign lighting standards, which is page 18 of the code, which requires that message centers within electronic message centers within 300 feet of any residential use be turned off between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00 AM. And we strongly recommend this section be eliminated. And why? Because the existing standards for electronic message centers is at 1,350 knits, which is about four times brighter than what is being proposed in this code, which is around 323 knits. So the proposed illumination standard, along with automatic dimming, will ensure that electronic sign illumination levels will change in brightness on ambient light when it's changing from night to daytime or on cloudy days. The recommended standard will also ensure that EMCs will really be no brighter than necessary. Therefore, the proposed curfew is not needed. In addition, electronic message centers will appear no brighter than a typical static sign, so there's really no nexus between this regulation and the desired outcome. And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak even after you closed this section of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Right? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider the final passage of an ordinance to amend Title 11, Chapter 2, Table 1 of the Helena, City of Helena zoning regulations.
Technology escapes me sometimes. So I've got three presentations in this one slide, and we'll go through each one of them as it is in the agenda. Of course, these are the final passage and the public hearings for these items. The original items in the first passage, they were conducted the first of June. So the first one is Title 11 zoning, and that is specific to Chapter 2, Table 1 of the city code for the zoning ordinance. It is a simple correction in our land use table. As you recall, 2022, first of 2023, we brought various land use changes to you relative to the table and the definitions. That ordinance passed, that's ordinance number 3304, where we retooled the the table and retooled the definitions. So relative to this request tonight, or this final ordinance or final passage of this ordinance, in the definitions, we had a separation of general services and professional offices, which was our intent, of course, but the table, we left it combined, which was an omission on our part. So to correct that issue tonight, we have before you for final passage is the separation of those two uses in the land use table, as well as a minor change in the land use table relative to permitted use, permitted zoning district, and as noted, they're circled in red, in the PLI District for General Services, that is a use that is not permitted in that professional offices work is more in line with what's typical typically allowed in PLI. For instance, cash for bonds or attorney's offices relative to adjacency to government offices, that sort of thing. So that's why it's permitted as professional offices in PLI, and general services is not allowed in PLI. Professional offices typically, the the customer is not present. General services requires the customer to come to the to the place of business to obtain service. General information, public notice, as part of our engagement piece, this ran in the IR two days, March 23rd, 2024, prior to zoning commission, and again on June 22nd, 2024, prior to this date. Zoning commission heard it on April 9th, 2024. It gave unanimous recommendation for these changes. City commission first passed was June 3rd, where again it received first passage unanimously, and so tonight, it's final pass and the public hearing. So our recommended motion, Mayor and Commission, from staff, is that you move to approve an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 2, Table 1 of the Helena, City of Helena zoning Any questions?
Cover's a question from the commission. Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Entertaining the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to try and make the motion without the actual language, so please, City Attorney, correct me if it's not correct. I move to approve final passage of an ordinance to amend Title 11, Chapter 2, Table 1. Oh, there it is. Of the City of Helena zoning regulations. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider final passage of an ordinance to amend title 11, chapter 40 of the City of Helena zoning regulation titled Establishment of Areas That Allow the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages and Casino Within the City Limit. Director Brink?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. So this is a little different. It's not really a cleanup, but it is perhaps providing some opportunity downtown for some local businesses. Recently, staff, probably in the last year, identified an issue in the regulations relative to chapter 40, which establishes distance requirements for uses relative to sale of alcoholic beverages. We worked hand in hand with the city attorney to draft this language, to clarify exactly what certain businesses can be from certain other businesses or from public institutions and uses. Currently, the city has in our ordinance that an area located within 600 feet, straight-line distance, from the closest exterior edge of a licensed premises to the closest boundary of a school property, except as permitted in this chapter. It reads currently, the MCA states that within 600 feet of and on the same street as a building used exclusively as a school, other than a community-operated post-secondary school. And this distance is measured straight line from the center of the nearest entrance to the nearest entrance of the licensee's premises. Oops. Wow, I went way far.
Questions from the commission?
I apologize. So we are proposing that we add and strike some language in this section to, one, make it clear, one, ensure that some of the existing businesses that may not have been licensed appropriately continue to operate in those locations, and then allow some opportunity for other businesses to locate in the downtown along the walking mall. So we're proposing adding the following language to chapter 11, or title 11, chapter 40, section 3A, at an area located within 600 feet, straight-line distance from the closest exterior edge of a licensed premise of the nearest entrance of a church, synagogue, or other place of worship located on the same side of the street. And we are proposing this so that we can exclude that from, as a distance requirement in the downtown. We have to add it so we can exclude it, if that makes sense. So in addition to that, adding it to the code, we propose that this now be excluded from that distance requirement. And so that exclusion would read, a licensed premise located within the downtown and the TR zoning districts, and that will be an exclusion as you read the full code. General information, of course, we ran this in the IR, March 23 and June 29. Zoning commission heard this on April 9, provided unanimous recommendation to you. City commission, you heard this on June 3, and unanimously passed first reading. Then tonight, it's before you for the public hearing and second reading. And quickly, in conclusion, staff recommends that you approve, move to approve an ordinance, amending title 11, chapter 40 of the Helena City Code relative to the zoning regulations. Excuse me.
Comments?
No any questions?
Do you have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance amending title 11, chapter 40 of the Helena City, City of Helena zoning regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider final passage of an ordinance to amend title 3, chapter 15, a Helena City Code titled Review Process for Demolition of Historic Buildings. Director Brink?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. So this is a culmination of a two-year process, just about a two-year process, where when I first arrived in the city, I was asked by our historic preservation staff to take a look at our demo process for historic buildings. In addition to historic preservation staff, city staff, building, planning, also identified some issues with this chapter as well. So after two years, we are bringing for you for final passage some changes to the demo process for historic buildings. Overall, it was the intent of this update, or overall, to update the roles and responsibilities, creating clear and concise definitions in the ordinance and processes, and minimize different interpretations and understandings of the demo program and process, which was prevalent previous. Some of the notable changes are, of course, there is a new title to this ordinance. Currently, as you note, it is just demo process for historic buildings. We've added structures and sites because that is pertinent to what we're here for because some of the interpretation, the meat of the ordinance only dealt with structures and not buildings. Buildings being the title, structures being in the meat of the document, which created some confusion. Buildings are anything that is built or constructed for habitation. Structures are any other engineered product, structure, bridge of that nature. So the ordinance only dealt with structures, but we had historically enforced it on buildings, which we did not think was proper. So immediately, it constituted a change on our part to rectify that. So we've added definitions of, we've refreshed the intent section based on commission input, and I'll highlight those here to second. We've added definitions to building, structure, and site. We've added definitions for historic preservation officer, which was absent. We've added definitions of the Heritage Tourism Council, which was absent, as well as the SHPO office or the SHPO officer, state historic preservation officer. Again, added definition to building and sites, and then a new definition of demolition that speaks more towards the partial or complete raising of the building or of a historic property rather than its simple alteration, which was a past interpretation that had dealt with minor changes in the site, which I think there was an overreach potentially. So we just clarified that and corrected that to make it clear what the intent of this ordinance is. And I'll speak to later what the next step would be so we can capture changes to historic buildings as well. Other notable changes, we've revamped the termination of review process and the workflow. We've made it in alignment with review processes and criteria for some of our other land use entitlement processes. We've added the opportunity for conditions of approval to be attached. The current ordinance does not provide you the opportunity to attach appropriate conditions if you wanted to, it was simple approval or denial of a request. And then we've added some additional requirements for the issuance of a historic demolition, quality standards, particularly for documents provided as part of that. And again, that was some of the commission input from June 3. So to wrap up or to conclude, some of our engagement pieces, HTC has done a lot of engagement and public hearings as part of this process, three as a matter of fact. City commission had their first reading passed June 3. Tonight is the public hearing, of course, and second reading, and this meeting ran in the IR on June 29. So we conclude this with staff recommendation that you move to approve an ordinance amending title 3, chapter 15 of the Helena City Code, currently titled Review Process for Demolition of Historic Buildings. And to note, some of the changes that we made, as you recall, the last meeting, Commissioner Dean brought up several changes that she wished to include, and here we wholeheartedly concurred with those changes, and we've included those in this, in your redlined version. Then after tonight, we'll put in a final draft version for signature. So again, that's our recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Make it short.
I'll be very brief, and it's just a comment. I just want to say that I'm very grateful to the Tourism, Heritage Tourism Council and staff, and also the community development staff. This has been a two-year process in terms of getting it off the ground once Director Brink got here, but we've been talking about this for over four years, and so I'm thrilled that we are finally to this point. Really, this is an update to an ordinance that gives us an opportunity to learn from urban renewal. And Flora's comments tonight, we heard just exactly the impact of urban renewal that led to the end of the Wingshane Grocery, and this presents an opportunity to be proactive in preserving the places of significance in our community. It also gives us an opportunity to take a holistic view of historic preservation in our community moving forward, and I am absolutely thrilled that we are to the point to adopt this tonight. So thanks to everyone for the many years of good work to get to this point.
Do we have any other comments from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance amending title 3, chapter 15 of the Helena City Code titled Review Process for Demolition of Historic Buildings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any final comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, final comments, commissioners? This meeting is adjourned.